Good afternoon. Welcome to the Burnley County St. Patty's Day meeting, emergency meeting, as called by Vice Chair Pascoti. Before we get the meeting going, we will start with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Julianne Baca.
(Inaudible)
Thank you to Commissioners O'Malley and Commissioner Casado, who are both on the phone. As you know, approximately two years ago, we did put forth the ability to hold telephonic meetings, so they are allowed to, and in light of what's happening today, smart that they are both participating in a way that they feel comfortable. Before we get started, I did just want to say a quick few words. The environment we're in today is unprecedented in the history, at least in my 56 years of being alive. I've lived through a number of things, not the least of which, 9/11, not the least of which many of you who participate, other catastrophes in the history of the world. But like I said, right now is unlike anything that I think any of us have ever experienced. And the reason I want to say that is, it is times like this that we need to have compassion, empathy, patience, grace, and a little bit of forgiveness for that. We're not going to do everything right. We're going to make a lot of mistakes. Now, we're going to fix those quickly, but when you think about things that are changing minute by minute, hour by hour, day by day, that's the kind of environment we're in right now. Now, I have to say, I'm pretty dang proud at the way that the county has responded in force across all of our elected offices, the staff, commissioners, everyone, pulling together to do the right thing. And by the way, the right thing is what we think is right right now at, what time is it, Julianne? 2:35 on Tuesday afternoon, because guess what? By the time we're done with this meeting, something else could have happened nationally, statewide. By the way, before I walked in, Macy's now has closed all stores, okay? Following suit from other major retailers. Yesterday, McDonald's, all lobbies closed, drive-up only. Starbucks, same thing. I mean, go through the litany of things that are changing minute by minute. So the purpose of the meeting today is to provide some additional powers for our county manager to be able to make decisions quickly, efficiently, and effectively that benefit the citizens of Burnley County and the employees of Burnley County. This has not come without great thought, this has not come without great consternation around what should we give, what should we not give, how much should we allow? But the one thing that I know is I trust Julie Morgas-Baca to make the right decision. And I want her to have the ability, as I do think other commissioners do, to make those decisions in an environment where all of us may not be available to say, okay, if we need to move resources between departments in order to cover shortages, do it. If we didn't make amendments to the budget in order to make sure that we have enough dollars in order to cover our small businesses that may need help and support, assuming correctly and appropriately, do it. If the sheriff says, hey, I need some additional support right now, because guess what, we're having challenges, let's do it. Let's do it openly, let's do it transparently, and let's do it with purpose and intent. And by doing so, I think we'll continue to have the trust of those that we represent and those that reside in Burnley County. People are saying, well, why can't I participate? How come you're not having people in the audience? The only people in the audience are employees of Burnley County, and the only others are us up here, which by the way, we're practicing social distancing. It is approximately four to five feet between myself and Commissioner Colley and myself, Commissioner Pascoti, and Madam Clerk. I hope people are taking it serious. Whether you believe in it or not is irrelevant. That is not what we're debating. What we're saying is, it's here, it's happening, it's right now in front of us, and the way we respond will have ramifications for the days to follow. So would we love to have a packed audience so they could think and see everything, or, excuse me, so they could see everything live if that's what they want to do? Sure, but we can't, because guess what? The governor has said no more than 50, now the president's said no more than 10, and we want to be smart, and we want to be safe, and we want to make sure that we flatten the curve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Casado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And before we continue, I, you know, well said, thank you for those remarks. I think something that we have to say is, this is a global pandemic. This is not just happening in the United States, this is happening all over the planet. So, you know, like you said, this is unprecedented. We've never seen anything like this. I'm not quite sure we've even ever experienced anything in the history of this. And you're right, we know nothing about this virus. This is, we know very, very little on even how it transmits, or how, or anything really about it, or how it incubates, or any of these things that they're trying to figure out. And I just wanted everybody to know, the reason why I'm not there in person at this meeting with my fellow commissioners is, as you all know, I travel a lot, I'm in airplanes a lot, and the last time I was in a major airport was seven days ago. They're saying there's about a 14-day, you know, they want you to kind of be away from people for 14 days. I wanted to honor that, because that's what has come down, not only from the President of the United States, but through our governor, and if you watched the city council meeting yesterday, they're all, they all agree that we're in a different types of times, and that we have to take the measures, not only to protect ourselves, but to protect others. And so I think it's really important to tell parents and people who have children in school that yes, perhaps the virus isn't a life-threatening thing for kids that are in school, but as you all know, kids are like the honeybees of viruses. They will spread it quicker than anything. And that is why APS was the first one to jump on board and cancel school, and we're doing our best and our due diligence of what it takes to, you know, protect this community. So I just wanted to let everybody know, thank you for, you know, showing up. I wish I was there with you, but the reason why I'm at home is for the safety of others, not just for myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Casado, and appreciate you for taking the diligence and following the guidance that's been directed nationally and internationally. Appreciate that. So today, we're here to talk about two, a resolution and an ordinance, adoption of resolution, commissioners declaring Burnley County to be an emergency area, motion to approve administrative resolution. Madam Clerk, what resolution? Oh, yes, sorry, Commissioner Pascoti, sorry, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner, may I make a few?
Oh, please.
Remarks? Thank you, Commissioner. There've been questions about how we can have this meeting, and I just wanted to read, we've been in contact with the Attorney General's Office, their Open Meetings Division, asking about him, and fortunately, he's just issued a discussion and guidance for how we would do it, and I just want to read it out loud, so we're all cognizant of it as we proceed, and you've already done most of it, but at the start of the meeting, the chairperson should announce the names of those members of the public entity participating remotely. And I think, Mr. Chair, you probably already indicated that Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Casado are here by teleconference. All members of the public entity participating remotely might, must identify themselves whenever they speak, and must be clearly audible to the other members of the public entity and to the public, and I think we've noted that. You'll note that Commissioner Casado introduced himself when he spoke by phone, but it's important, as anyone speaks, to introduce themselves, so that someone that's following this will be able to tell who it is speaking at that time. The chairperson or person leading the meeting should suspend discussion if the audio or video is interrupted, so if we get note of that, then we'll suspend until that's fixed, and that's what, that's our regular course of business, anyway. All votes of the public entity should be done by roll call, and I think Madam Clerk's here available to help you with that today, and that way, once again, the public will know how each member voted, without being able to see, actually, but they'll see teleconference and it'll be noted. And finally, and this is something Burnley County already does, public entities should produce or maintain a recording of the open session of the meeting, which we do. It's a live stream, and then it's recorded, and it's, it's available to members to see it later times. So, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to kind of read those guidelines for our compliance.
Thank you, Kenny, and sorry, I forgot, you told me that, my mind's flying out so quickly. So we'll start with, we'll get an AR number, and then we'll go to Commissioner Pascoti, who will talk about the resolution. So, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, that'll be AR 2020-29.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Pascoti?
Thank you. And I just want people to know that, I know that there are members of the press who are watching our live stream right now, which is available to the public at burnco.gov. And do you, Julianne Baca, I'd like to ask you, have there been any public comments submitted for this meeting?
There has not, no.
There are no public comments submitted, thank you. I just want to make sure that we are transparent and open to anyone who would like to submit any feedback on this, so thank you. And now, I would like to read a prepared statement. I'd like to open up my remarks by letting the people of Burnley County know that the hearts of every single one of us on the Burnley County Commission is with you and supporting you during this public health crisis. This is a very difficult time, and our public safety and emergency management teams have been working around the clock to find solutions to keep the public safe and healthy. I want to commend Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham and her entire administration for its rapid and comprehensive action regarding this public health emergency. New Mexico has positioned itself well, due to the quick response from state government, including the governor's office, the State Department of Health, the State Department of Workforce Solutions, the State Human Services Department, and the State Aging and Long-Term Services Department, and the Public Education Department, among many other departments and agencies in New Mexico. I encourage every resident of Burnley County and every New Mexican to follow the advice and information provided by the Centers for Disease Control and the New Mexico Department of Health. They are the experts, and they have the health and safety of our local communities, our state, and our entire country in mind when making recommendations and orders for the public to follow. I want to stress to everyone that it's extremely important to practice social distancing, washing your hands frequently, staying away from crowds and large groups of people, practicing the six-foot rule, and to stay home as much as possible. Enjoy the outdoors, in nature, and away from others. Spend some time gardening or finishing a home improvement project. Lastly, take this as an opportunity to be with your immediate family. One of Burnley County's top priorities is the health and safety of our employees, and that's why we scaled back operations and closed various departments and county buildings yesterday at noon and continuing until April 15th. Law enforcement, firefighters, rescue personnel, 911 dispatch, and the Metropolitan Detention Center will work as normal. These closures and reductions are, once again, in an effort to control the spread of COVID-19 and limit personal contact between residents. In just a moment, I'm going to make a motion to approve an administrative resolution declaring Burnley County an emergency area as a result of COVID-19. This resolution is for the purpose of exercising necessary emergency powers and expenditure of available resources and requesting aid, assistance, and relief programs and funds available from the state of New Mexico. County agencies, departments are directed to utilize county resources and to do everything reasonably possible to assist effective political subdivisions in an effort to respond to and recover from the outbreak. It will allow for the coordination of Burnley County officials to control county resources and manage and coordinate those resources for the control of the spread of COVID-19 and maintain public health. Due to the nature of this public health emergency, this resolution will also allow the county manager to implement all necessary and proper measures to allow for flexibility of time and location of work, including for off-site and remote work for all employees as necessary during this period of this emergency. I will also make a motion to adopt the civil, county civil emergency management powers ordinance. This ordinance will, in preparation for the potential increase of COVID-19 cases and in alignment with the state of New Mexico and the city of Albuquerque, Burnley County will expand the emergency management ordinance to include emergency powers. The intent of this ordinance is to protect the health and safety of persons and property during an emergency or disaster resulting from man-made or natural causes. Lastly, I want to applaud Burnley County Manager Julie Morgas-Baca and County Attorney Ken Martinez for all their hard work, diligence, and commitment to the people of this great county. I also want to thank all the other elected officials, Emergency Manager Director Richard Clark, Chief Greg Perez, our Deputy County Manager of Public Safety, and all of our Deputy County Managers and Department Heads at Burnley County for their cooperation and dedication during these very difficult times. Lastly, I want to thank every single Burnley County employee. I appreciate your service to our community. We could not provide for a safe and healthy county without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, so, we have a AR for motion to approve administration resolution, AR 2020-29. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, at this point, if I, I just have one, I want to make a comment about something? Okay. Commissioners Casado or O'Malley, any comments or discussion from the phone?
I have just one real quick comment. Thank you all for acting quickly. Like I said, I watched the city council meeting last night, it took them three hours to decide that we were in emergency and that we needed to move forward and make sure that people that were in charge were getting the things done, and it took the Burnley County Board of Commissioners 15 minutes. So I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Casado. I would ask that the commission would possibly entertain striking just one item within the order, that is, the order, the discontinuance of selling, distributing, or giving away of gasoline or other liquid flammable products or closings of gas stations. The reason for me asking to remove that is I feel that that could cause a panic-type situation. That is a situation that every, basically, human being goes and gets gas at the gas station, and if we were to stop that from happening, for whatever reason we felt necessary and no one else did, possibly could cause a panic situation that I would not want to see. So I'd like to ask that we strike that one item. Everything else in here is amazing and looks good. County Manager Baca?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, I just wanted to, to, you know, thank you all, thank you first for your, for your words at the beginning of the meeting, and thank you, Commissioner Pascoti. I also want to acknowledge the commission for their trust in me and my leadership team and staff, our county attorney, just for allowing us to do our jobs. I don't know that, I don't know that you'll ever know how important that is, that is to us and how much we appreciate it, and it's serving us very well. Things, I'm not saying that things are going to be perfect, and that, because they're not, but I can assure you that we have the best and the brightest who are behind me with their staff that are doing what they need to do, serving the community, keeping us safe, providing essential services to the community, and we will not let you down. And so I just wanted to thank you all again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager Baca.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Pascoti.
Thank you, County Manager. I would like to address this to County Attorney Ken Martinez. So the item that you brought up, Mr. Chairman, is Section 3(c), the order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, or giving away gasoline or liquid flammable. I am fine with striking that, and my question to you is, I'm guessing, I don't know the exact history of this document, but I believe that it was to bring into alignment other documents that were either on file or as part of the city of Albuquerque's ordinance and resolution. Can you speak to that a bit, how this item got here?
Thank you, and that's a very good question, Mr. Chair Commissioner. The first draft of this document was basically taking all the emerging, emergency management capacities for a leader to do. In the city case, it would have been the mayor, in this case, it would be the manager. It included some things that have already been winnowed down by the sponsor that we're not even seeing here, like bombs and things, ammo, things of that nature. Winnowed down more, in particular, for this instance, although when you start with these emergency powers, we bring you the grocery cart full of everything, and you get to pick and choose that what you want, and that's kind of where you're at right now.
Okay, and so, we, I think we do really want to winnow this down to what is essential at this time. I know we're not interested in government overreach or any hidden agenda, we just want to make sure that people are safe during the COVID crisis, and so I'm fine striking that. And I also want to mention that this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is a living document. If something comes up and the county, the Board of Commissioners just needs to come back and strike something, change something, add something, we can do that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Kenny, I appreciate that, and see, I will tell you what Commissioner Casado just said, this is why this commission gets stuff done. We work together. We do not worry about other things, we say what's smart, and now we're going to get it done, I'm going to stop talking, so we can get it done, so we can meet Commissioner Casado's deal, it'll be 15 minutes, bam. Anyway, so I guess I have to make an amendment to this, to strike that, oh, Commissioner Colley?
Well, we're still talking about that. So we're on Section 3(c), arguing, striking both sentences or just the last sentence?
If you could, I don't have it in front of me, if you could read this, or, let me read it and I'll tell you. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, sir. Order the discontinuance of selling, distributing, or giving away gasoline or any other liquid flammable or combustible product in any container other than a gasoline tank property affixed to a motor vehicle. Set sale to be limited and not more than one. I mean, I would, I would take out all of c, I mean, because, yeah.
You're striking c.
I only had the first part of it, I apologize. So, yeah, I would take out c, because that isn't, no pun intended, inflammatory in terms of what it could cause in the community, so.
Well, while we're being inflammatory, County Manager, what, what are we guarding against by having this in? Or Ken?
I think probably that goes to some of the other stuff that was already stricken, which would be, there's protections against rioting. So this is a whole different issue here with regard to disease control, but the emergency management powers really started coming up in the rioting situation in the 60s, and so you're worried about flammables being used for riot purposes, and that's probably what the gasoline was. There was also probably some questions about gasoline rationing, like for a hurricane when people are trying to go in one direction, things of that nature. I don't think there's a current crisis with regard to gasoline management that occurs for us at this point.
The first sentence, it seemed to me not inappropriate in terms of, you know, people grabbing the empty gallon of milk carton and running down, and God knows what you want to do with that. So I was differentiating the two sentences there. I have no objection to that.
Great, thank you, thank you for the support. Okay, so I will make a motion to accept AR 2020-29 with the removal of Section 3, Item c.
So that first motion would be your motion to delete Item c, and then just rewrite accordingly, so we'll vote on your motion first?
Okay.
Need a second?
First, I'll support, or, yeah, we need a second? Second from Commissioner Pascoti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we want to call the roll on that.
Yeah, we will, for sure. Okay, thank you. If, Madam Clerk, the motion has been motioned and seconded?
No, not anymore.
If you would please call the roll on this particular amendment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Casado?
Yep.
Commissioner Pascoti?
Yes.
Commissioner Collier?
Yes.
Chairman Teller?
Yes.
So called, sir.
Wow, that was new and different, I like that. All right, thank you all, okay, for the support. So now, with that amendment passing unanimously, I move to approve administrative resolution AR 2020-29 as amended.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Pascoti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
We'll have the third call the roll.
Well, yeah. Madam Clerk, if you'd now call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner O'Malley? Commissioner O'Malley? Commissioner Pascotti?
I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, there she is. Okay. Commissioner Casado?
Yes.
Commissioner Pascotti?
Yes.
Commissioner Collier?
Yes.
Chairman Teller?
Yes, thank you.
So called.
Motion carries, thank you so much, and thank you for the flexibility in all of this, this is some new things that we're getting, that's good, thank you, Kenny, for sure. We are now on to item number three, adoption of ordinance, county civil emergency management powers ordinance. This is motion to adopt ordinance number 2020. Madam Clerk, dash?
2020-29, sir.
Thank you. Establishing a new Article 3 to Chapter 22, county civil emergency management powers. Commissioner Pascoti?
I move to approve.
Excellent. I second? All in favor?
Did we have, did we have an amendment to this one?
On the copy that, yes, yes, sir, on the copy that is distributed to the commissioners, I assume, other folks in the room, Section 4, publication of orders, there is a new second paragraph that's displayed there that, that second paragraph gives us a way to make sure that the commissioners' orders, or the county managers' orders and declarations are made a part of the minutes of the commission as we go forward. So with that in mind, I move the amendment to Section 4 by the addition of that second paragraph.
This was a, the commissioner had read the first draft of the legislation, he had an idea about having the manager report back to the commission, that's what this amendment does, it does, becomes part of the next commission meeting, so this is just further transparency, and this was an amendment that Commissioner wanted us to prepare for him. We prepared it in enough time to get it actually published, so it's been published, but I think we should go ahead and act on it?
Sure. No, I like that, I like the transparency and the accountability coming back, so I think we've all... think we've all always appreciated County Manager Baca and the way that she reports back. So that'd be great. Okay. So.
Motion.
Do, motion. I'll second that. So now we will take a vote on the amendment to Article III, Chapter 22. I will go ahead and take the vote, and then we'll do the roll call. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving ordinance 2020-7 as amended by Commissioner Colley. Say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, excellent.
Mr. Chair, roll call. Commissioner O'Malley? Thank you. Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner Pascoti?
Yes.
Commissioner Collier?
Yes.
Chairman Tapper?
Yes.
So called.
Excellent. Passed unanimously. Now we will go ahead.
We have, and I should have caught this, and I apologize. The amendment on the gasoline, that actually is coming out of the ordinance, not out of the resolution. So we actually voted on that in the resolution, but I think what we should do is vote on it in this ordinance. So if we could go ahead and do that again, to make it correct, because the resolution was the declaration, and then the powers are here in the ordinance. So if you could remake the motion to delete c, which is the gasoline?
Got it.
We'll do it in the ordinance. I apologize for not catching it.
No problem. Thanks for, again, this is fluid. We're on the fly. We're getting it done. So I, I make a motion to the ordinance to remove Item c out of Section 3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Tapper? No, I'm sorry. Commissioner Pascot?
Yes.
Commissioner Collier?
Aye.
Chairman Tapper?
Aye.
So called.
Passed unanimously. Thank you, Kenny, for that.
And then I think just to make sure that it's clear, the record should reflect that the resolution passed without any amendments to it. And I guess if there'd be any objection, it could be noted, but I don't think there's any objection.
Okay. Any more votes we need to take? We got them all?
I believe you now need to vote on the ordinance as a whole, as amended.
Okay, thank you. So now with the amendment from Commissioner Colley, we will vote for ordinance 2020-7 as amended. I will move that forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Colley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner Pascot?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Chairman Tapper?
Aye.
So called.
Unanimous. Thank you all very much again for flexibility, for fluidness. Oh, yes. Vice Chair Pascoti, please.
I just want to make a statement about, you know, a part of the reason that we're doing this, County Manager Julie, is that we do trust you. And one of the reasons I think we trust you so much is that you are a team player, and there have been so many teams working on our emergency strategies and plans, you know, everybody at every level of the county. And for the people watching out there, you're part of our team, too. You're our people, and we're all on the same team. We all want the same thing. And I appreciate you so much, County Manager Julie Morges Baca, for being such a great team player and keeping us informed, keeping the public informed. And I really think that's the way good government works. So thank you.
Great comments. All right. Without any further, this meeting at 3:05 is adjourned. Thank you all very much.